Ongoing negotiations with employee groups and/or personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene our regular session at 6:30 PM.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the June 9, 2021 regular school committee meeting at 6:34 PM. The June 9 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. The meeting can be viewed live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22, on Verizon Channel 34, or at youtube.com/TucksburyTV. Is there anyone in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Seeing none, thank you. We will get on to business. At this time, I would like to ask our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for attending this evening. It's wonderful to see so many people in the audience, and it's nice to have some of our retirees here as well. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everyone. Certainly, this is one of our bittersweet times of the year where we start to wind down the school year, but it's also time to recognize many of our retirees who will be leaving the district, but certainly leaving with quite an impression on all of us as individuals, but mostly the students here in Tucksbury. And we're here to thank them, honor them, and recognize them. We have a couple of things we're going to do tonight. First, I'd just like to read off a list of the names of individuals who'll be retiring from the Dewing Elementary School, Ms. Carolyn Julie, who's been with us for 15 years; from the Ryan Elementary School, Ms. June Fagan, who's been with us for 12 years; Ms. Jane Carter, who's been with us for 23 years; Ms. Sue Spollin, who's been with us for 11 years; and Ms. Margaret Whitehouse, who's been with us for 22 years; from Tucksbury Memorial High School, Lynn Hardey, who could not be here this evening, who's been with us for 15 years; and Ms. Pat Whitehouse, who's been with us for 12 years; and finally, from the Wynn Middle School, Mr. Louis Dicetto, who's been with us for seven years. Before we start with a few things, I'd like Ms. Julie Taggart and Mrs. Zullo to please come up representing the Tucksbury Teachers Association with their recognition for our retirees as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. I haven't been in this auditorium in a long time. It feels really good to be in here, being colleagues as yourselves, and we are better for being colleagues with you, and the students at Tucksbury are so much better, and the families for having been able to work with you all these years. You are going to enjoy the month of August probably like no other because you don't have to get ready to come back. But congratulations, and we have a little something for you that Lisa will come on over and give. But thank you very much for all your service, and we are just so lucky and proud of you. And congratulations, all of you.
I'd just like to add that a couple of you ladies sitting there, I've spent many years without the Ryan myself, and I'm sorry to see you go. We will definitely miss you and your bright smiles each and every day, but thank you. June Fagan.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Carolyn Julie.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Zullo and Mrs. Taggart for joining us this evening. Much appreciated.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'd just at this time like Ms. Garrish to join me up front as we kind of go through all the individual retirees. Again, a very bittersweet moment. We're certainly so appreciative of all the work our great staff members do every day, but certainly those who are now moving on to retirement. And Ms. Garrish, if you could speak a little bit about Ms. Julie, who will now be leaving the Dewing School.
The Dewing School will be a less quiet, if you can. And Carolyn is such a wonderful addition to a faculty and staff because not only she celebrates her success by bringing children who have graduated from speech and language services around to anyone with things they say "I graduated from speech," and she celebrates every milestone with children. And her children's and her students' successes are her successes. She's an incredibly supportive colleague. She works collaboratively with every grade level team she is. She brings a wealth of knowledge of her craft and of the way kids learn and of the way teams work every single day and makes the whole special education team and process. She's one of the leaders of all the related service providers in our building. She comes, she bakes like no tomorrow. And one of the things during the pandemic we missed is our Friday breakfast because -- and now we're going to miss them again because you're not here, which that's one. Carolyn, we want to thank you so much for the service to us and to the children of Tucksbury, and thank you very much for being here, and we're grateful for you.
Now, I'd like to bring up probably the most stressed out person in the room right now. It's the principal of the Ryan School because she'll be trying to replace four individuals approaching 100 years of teaching experience just in Tucksbury alone. The amount of energy, value that's gone into educating our students at the Ryan School is certainly reflective of that, and we're very appreciative. But Ms. McGinnis, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, everyone. I am surprised to be standing here, but I'm delighted to be standing here. We have four of the true heroes in education. They represent specialist class, a homeroom teacher, special education. I couldn't be prouder of my graduating class of 2021. They're probably giggling thinking, "We're not graduating, we're retiring," but it's a chapter change, and I'm so excited for all of you. I only wrote a few things because it captures all of you. The care and compassion that you've shown for our students and our families will be forever remembered genuinely by so many students who talk about each of you individually and your classes. I think we've inspired musicians. We've seen students learn to code who have never heard of the term before. We've seen students learn to read, to write, to understand the impact of history. And I myself have stood in each of these classrooms awe-inspired and a better person myself, having done it. Your deep compassion to this chosen career, and some of you have come into it with just that same drive that every new teacher starts with, we just talked about, this is a calling, and you found your calling, and we're so glad you did. So I will leave you with just a big thank you. Thank you from the Ryan School community, but mostly thank you from Judy. Thank you all.
June, come on up, please. Our next retiree is from Tucksbury Memorial High School. Pat Whitehouse is a fixture of the high school, to say the least. Ms. Regan, I was wondering if you might come up and speak a few words about our wonderful Ms. Whitehouse.
Well, you don't need to appear much for this. And in fact, I was looking around, looking for a mistletoe, but I think I can do new service. We've gone, we've got there a long way, for those who don't know. We're family members, but also we've worked half days to opening this high school. To say you're a fixture at this high school and you've solved a lot of problems for a lot of people, including myself, including every student that's walked through these halls, every teacher, the go-to person is Pat Whitehouse. If you don't know the answer, you ask her. And you are just so kind and caring in the way you perform, not just your job, but the care you give to every student and every staff member. It's commendable. It's unbelievable. I know that's how you live your life, and we appreciate that you brought that spirit to the Tucksbury High School for so many years, and thank you so much.
Our last member, who moonlights as a custodian but is really the mayor of the Wynn Middle School, is a unique individual. Louis Dicetto is certainly a personality. He's also someone that brings a lot of great credit to our custodian staff. He has had their union for many years and has put forth a work ethic that is really fantastic. And to walk into this year for our custodians amongst everybody, but particularly for our custodians to walk into a situation during the pandemic and have to react and do some things that were never in their job description, to work some hours that were never in their expectations, and for Louis to lead people through that is certainly impressive. I have Brett Wees here, and John Weir, and Roland, why don't you all come on up for a second? And if you could talk a little bit about Louis.
Louis, it's your big day, Louis. You've got your flowers and everything. You know, thank you, Louis, so much for your commitment to Tucksbury Public Schools, more specifically to the Wynn for the past five years. You've been a great friend to students. You create relationships with them, warm relationships. I know they'll carry memories of you forever. Our staff, friendly with our staff, always with a kind word in your Louisisms, your catchphrases that some of us will repeat for years to come. As the superintendent indicated, you rose to meet the daunting challenges of the return of students to school and the daily maintenance of the school every day to keep it safe and clean for everybody, and we truly appreciate that. On this, you're spraying my light switch and my doorbell every day. So I'll miss the last we had together, and I know the whole school will miss you, and I wish you bright days ahead at your home and your sister's place in North Carolina, where you've spent a lot of time. So congratulations. Thank you.
Louis, first and foremost, I want to say congratulations. We've had a work relationship for about five years now, and it wasn't until the pandemic hit that I really got to know you a little bit more personal. And I've always really appreciated your dedication to the school system. And one thing I want to say about Louis is he's always been upfront and honest, and that's one thing that I really admired and appreciated working with you. And Louis has really taken control of the Wynn over the past couple of years of head to custodian there and turned that little around. And through the pandemic, he was going through some really personal things, and he always put the Wynn first, and that's something I appreciate. So again, congratulations on retiring. You deserve it, and I look forward to hearing from you in the future. Don't ever lose my phone number, I'll always answer. Thank you.
Louis started off with me here at the high school. We opened it pretty much together. I just want to say it was great working with you, and I'm going to miss you. Congratulations, Louis.
And again, Mr. Chairman, congratulations to Lynn Hardey as well, longtime English teacher here at Tucksbury Memorial High School. Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if you'd entertain a short recess so that the individuals who have been on in here tonight can celebrate.
Sure, absolutely. Don't worry. All those in trailer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks. The ayes have it. We'll send a recess to our penmanship hall. That's ten minutes. We're returning in ten minutes. That's 10 minutes, we're returning 10 minutes.
Thank you. Would you like to reach in for me in the regular school committee meeting?
At 6:59 PM. And once again, congratulations to our retirees and their families, and thanks for coming in this evening. It was wonderful to have them. With that, we're going, unfortunately, we do not have a student representative report this evening. We will be looking forward to that report from Mr. Jack Stadman in July. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Regan, for our presentation this evening regarding summer school programming.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you click the slides? Sure. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, you have in front of you, so that you don't have to wrench your neck and look at the presentation behind you, you have a copy of the presentation, as well as an updated grid of the summer programming that we're planning. So I just want to asterisk more than once, that's okay, Ms. Dr. Bastieri, you can leave it right there. All of the planning in the summer school programming you're about to hear about is contingent on staffing and family participation. So I probably will say that three or four times, just to punctuate that. The grid that you see on screen is an updated and revised version that was in your packet as of Friday. So you can see that more summer school programming has been planned in the last few days. I'm not going to go through that grid because it's a little tedious to read, but I'm going to summarize the programming that we have, that we're planning currently. So the goal, obviously, is to offer as many, a multitude of support programs to maintain learning and minimize summer regression for as many students as possible with an attention to social-emotional aspect of learning. We will be offering tiered systems of support throughout the differing programs you'll hear about. Students will be invited based on identified need. Our facility use, you'll see, is scattered throughout the district, but many of our buildings are undergoing summer maintenance and improvement projects, so not all of our schools will be used. And the summer programming, again, as I said I will punctuate, is contingent upon staffing and family interests. Right now, we're prioritizing and reaching out to licensed staff employed by the district. So these details may change as we go, and we'll certainly communicate those changes to our parents and update our documents that we post online. And currently, every program you're going to hear about tonight is at no cost to our families. So the first of those programs, let me move this side of the way. Dr. Bastieri, our Director of Grants, will talk about some of our grant-funded programming.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Good evening to the school committee members and administration. I'm very happy to tell you about some of the grant-funded programs that will be offered to students and families in the district. The first is one that we are all very proud of, especially those folks at the Doing, and special thanks to the principal of the Doing School, Ms. Gerish, who have worked very hard over the past three years. This was a three-year grant-funded program. We started off small, but it has blossomed. It is currently during the school year, offered to students after school, and also will have a summer program as well, eight hours a day for five weeks. Students are invited based on need, and the funding source is the 21st Century Community Learning Center Federal Grant. I'm also happy to say that this is, this was the initial grant funding was over a three-year period. We are in the process of applying for an exemplary grant that will be, provide funding for this program for the next three years as well. So again, the efforts of very many people collaborating together to put this together and to make it so successful is so much appreciated, and our students are really going to benefit from it. The next is called the Penguin Pride Program. It's actually an after-school and out-of-school time grant, but we were looking for something that was a little more relevant to the little ones. And this grant is an expansion of the 21st Century Grant, and it will mirror everything that's happening at the Doing School after school in the summer, but it will be for the students at the Heathbrook School. Again, students are invited based on need, and it's ASOST, but more affectionately known as the Penguin Pride Program. We will continue with our high school academic credit recovery. Again, there was grant money available. Typically, there's tuition for this program, but we will be able to offer this to students and their families free of charge for all students. It's for students in grades nine to 12 that perhaps failed a course, or they didn't get credit because of poor attendance, and they will be able to participate in a rigorous program this summer over a four-week period where they'll be able to get their credits reestablished. Their funding source for this particular grant comes from three different grants, the Title IV, which is federal, the ASOST, and we also have another integrating social-emotional learning into academics. Those are the three grant funding sources. The Wynn Middle School is another credit recovery program, and it is, it mirrors the high school program. It will also take place at the same time as the high school program. And the current student population for grades seven and eight, it will allow students that have failed two or more core academic courses during the school year to be able to have the opportunity to make up those courses so that they can proceed or graduate to the next grade level. Same funding source as the high school program. Okay? And next, I'll turn the mic over to Mrs. Regan, she's going to tell you about some other grant.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind running the show or driving the program?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, luckily, we have some very motivated teachers over at the Ryan School. The grants, programs that you just heard about did not include funding for grades five and six, and so some teachers, through Principal McGinnis, came forward and were very proactive and said, "If we put forth a proposal for math and literacy summer school programming for our students with need, our lowest-performing students, would we approve it?" Luckily, we have the SIR funds, and we said, "Of course, yes." So we're looking at a grade five, six summer school at the Ryan, which will focus on math and literacy with an enrichment component as well. Additionally, our English language teachers came forward and said, "Do we have any SIR funding?", which of course we did, "to propose a grade K through two and three, four, English Language Learner Summer Services." Again, this program is based on students' identification and need, and the funding source is SIR. We can move on to the next. What we also have is some Title I grant-funded summer programs. The Heathbrook and the Doing, for a few years now, have been running what they call a Jump Start Reading Program. They use data like DIBELS and other benchmark literacy assessments to determine which students need that jump start to move on to the next school year, to maintain their literacy and language learning, but also move on to the next school year. They'll be running that program again this year for our current grades K1 or our rising grades one and two students. You can see that the Trahan School is also accessing some of our Title I funds. This was another area, we did not have a robust summer school program, and hats off to these teachers and to the principals because within a couple of weeks, they've really pulled together a comprehensive plan that mirrors much like what the Ryan is doing. It's a literacy and math summer school program. Again, this will target our lowest-performing students and students of need. As I said, it will not only come out of Title I, but it'll also include a Wednesday STEM enrichment component. Dr. Bastieri is going to come up and talk about the next slide, which is an exciting new grant opportunity to Tewksbury.
This is very exciting, and it's hot off the presses. Recently, we discovered, or we were notified, that Tewksbury is entitled to $87,000 to run DESI Academic Acceleration Academies. And there's a few caveats that go along with this, but they must take place after an existing summer program. They can't replace an existing summer program. They must be week-long in duration, five days during the week, and they have to be at least four hours per day or 20-plus hours per week. And we have so many wonderful programs for our children throughout the district in grades pre-K to 12 that we're able to offer academies at the end of all the programs that we're going to have during the summer. In literacy, for our rising kindergarteners and first, second, and second graders, we will have the literacy program in connection with Jump Start Reading, the English Language Arts Summer Program, and also the 21st Century and Penguin Pride Programs. So those, again, that would be the rising kindergarteners, first and second graders. For math, our rising third and fourth graders, which would be, the third and fourth graders would be the current second and third graders. We can connect that to the English Language Arts Summer Programs, also the Trahan and North Street Summer Programs, and the 21st Century and Penguin Pride Programs. And our Math Academic Academy will take place at the end of the academic summer school for our rising eighth and 10th graders. So again, students will be identified based on need, but if they qualify for these programs, they will also be able to attend these week-long academic academies. Okay? And next? I believe I'll turn the mic over to Rick, Mrs. Regan.
Yes. If we could invite our Director of Special Education, Mr. Richard Pelletier, to come up. He's going to inform you of the next program under Special Education.
Good evening, school committee members and Superintendent Malone. Thank you, Ms. Regan. We continue to follow the D's guidelines with respect to extended school year services. Programming is in place for both in-person and for remote learning. The vast majority of students, though, will be in-person with a, which is in line with the Department of Ed, but also, it's a very small percentage of students who will be remote learners or receiving services either synchronous or asynchronously. The four-week programs include the Spire Program, which is our intensive reading program for struggling readers and non-readers. We have an academic program, again, four weeks, ELA and mathematics. We have an alternative program at the high school for ninth through 10th, ninth through 12th grade to recover credits. And we also have the Bridge Program, which is our social-emotional learning program. It's for incoming grade four through eight students. And this is the only program in the four-week program that's actually four days a week. It's Monday through Thursday. The other program- The other programs are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then we also have the Progression Program, which covers all of the high school, ninth through 12th. And then we have services related, which are occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech and language. Then we have our five-week developmental learning programs. That runs from July 12th through August 12th, and that's Monday through Thursday. All students participating in the ESY programs were determined by their IEP teams, and they were determined to possibly experience some substantial regression during the period of time of the summer school ending and then the summer resuming. Families have been notified of the ESY services. A flyer was provided electronically outlining the programs, the start and end times and dates of each of the programs. We are updating that. That will be coming out. It's forthcoming. It's either going to happen Friday or early next week. We also have transportation services, which we have been coordinating with Mr. Libby, and the note, the routes still have to be determined, but the times are pretty much in place. We also created a gap week. The gap week was created, and it's part of the concept of recruitment. That's where there's a break in service, which may cause students to experience regression from previously learned skills. And since our last day of school is June 16th and our summer programs begin on July 12th, that period of time, three and a half weeks, we felt we needed to provide something. And by offering the gap week, it's really a reasonable service that anticipates whether that substantial regression will occur and/or prevents problems for any recruitment and from occurring within a gap of two weeks or more. By offering the gap service, the continuation of services provides the educational benefit of the, for the child, while it also reduces the district's exposure for potentially accruing service time because of missed opportunities. The other piece that we're providing is in-home services, ABA. We're really glad to be able to do this. We did survey our families recently, but another survey went out today for a little bit more detail, and we're glad that we're able to provide this. It's going to require additional training for our staff because they haven't been in the home in over a year. And then program books also need to be updated to ensure that the students are receiving the proper service at home. In addition, we have our after-school program. That's going to continue after the extended school year program concludes, and that will be provided to families who are interested in the after-school program in lieu of home services. And then finally, we have COVID-19 compensatory services. These were during the mandated school closure, March through June 2020, and I'm pleased to say that we have concluded all of the makeup hours necessary to be compliant with the Department of Ed. Additionally, during the course of this school year, compensatory services did accrue as a result of either illness of faculty or absenteeism due to related illnesses. And so those service hours are almost all completed. I would say about 95% are completed, and we have a very small group of students who will receive compensatory service hours over the summer.
Can you stay?
Sure.
Go to the question part. There may be some questions here, so if you want to sit right there. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Bastieri. So what if your child is not identified and does not fit into one of those summer school programs? What opportunities available for all students to maintain their learning or avoid that summer slide? What we've done is highlighted some of the best ways students can stay engaged during the summer, and first and foremost, reading, 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 reading. Having a book to read regularly, or a parent or some friend, peer, to read together with on a daily basis will keep the brain engaged. Certainly will help to maintain fluency and language literacy skills. So we encourage everyone, we'll talk about the summer reading program a little bit later in the meeting. I've also highlighted two free summer school programs that run online, and that is Camp Khan Kids. It's a four-week program with specific lessons and enrichment activities. It's for ages two through eight. Additionally, Khan Academy is running a free summer camp, summer school, you might say. It focuses on all the core content areas for grades three through 12, as well as with enrichment activities. And then I really want to highlight our Tewksbury Public Library offers many, many student reading activities and other activities throughout the summer for students and adults of all ages. I also want to point out that when we get to the summer reading program, that the library has all of those lists of books and offer a majority of our titles through audiobooks, which is very helpful for families. So, and if you haven't seen already, parents who may be watching or here in the audience, we've posted a very comprehensive program of activities for the summer in the greater Lowell area that's been compiled by a group called Macaroni Kids, and we welcome all families to take advantage of any of those opportunities, whether they are, we have not, they're not run by Tewksbury Public Schools, but when looking through that program, there's a wonderful array of things to do over the summer. So let me just talk a little bit, too, about some summer in-person transition programming and orientations, because it's important to note that while we're running summer school programs, we're also thinking about transitioning back to school. Dr. Bastieri and Karen Baker O'Brien, our Director of Student and Family Support, first and foremost, are going to run an orientation and information center session here at the high school for the grade seven through 12 students that will be coming to summer school here. Many of them have never stepped foot in the high school, and the parents are certainly going to need the needed information around how the summer school and credit recovery works for grades seven through 12. So they'll be reaching out to those parents. Those parents don't really know right now if their students will be involved in that summer school. We wait for the final grades for grades seven through 12 to know what students need to be invited for credit recovery. Also, you'll see our RLA or Remote Learning Academy. Student orientations and transitions back to school are being planned at every school. They'll vary. More information will certainly go out to all parents that were RLA parents later in the summer. And kindergarten orientation, an annual event. We're hoping all of these events are going to be taken, taken in person. I mean, that is the goal. That's the plan. They're being planned right now, the kindergarten orientations for both the Doing and the Heathbrook. And typically, that is the day or night before school starts. Freshman orientation will happen here at the high school, as it does annually, and this year will also be including sophomore full RLA students, because they did not have an opportunity to participate, participate in the freshman orientation last year. All right. In closing, some families have received notification that their child has been identified, is needing one of these summer school programs. Not all students yet. As I said, some of these programs are really new in the making, and we're very proud of those teachers, but we're still identifying the students that'll be invited. The Win and the High School are waiting for those final grades. There's still, this is still a large plan in progress. I'm very, very proud of our educators and our administrators, who are continuously working to put this together. There's many moving pieces, and our principals will still be working, not only to identify the students, but also reach out to families. Parents may contact school principals if you have specific questions about the program, and then we will publish, as I said, this slideshow and updates to all of our programs as we move towards those starting dates. With that, I'd like to open it up if the committee has any questions.
Great. We'll start with Mr. Parsons. Any questions, comments?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay. Mrs. Garabedian?
I have a lot to say, but I'm not going to. This is, there's a lot in here. This is great, and thank you for providing it to the district. I hope that there's a lot of support from the teachers and the families so that this can happen. So thank you very much. There's a lot in here.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mrs. Demos?
No, I, I'm, I think you have touched every learner in the Tewksbury Public Schools. I think that there is ample opportunity, and I thank you for putting this together and all the time that was into this document researching. It's, it's not an easy task, and I commend everyone for all the effort that went into this and for everything that is being offered to the students in Tewksbury.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And Mr. Stadman?
Again, just piggybacking off my colleagues, I mean, obviously, there's a lot with the funding and, again, identifying the needs and wants of everyone, not only for the free funding, but obviously, you know, we had Alphabet last year, and obviously, you know, the other programs, it just seems there's a lot more this year.
Yes.
Again, there's a lot here. I urge every, everyone out there to get a hold of all of these contacts here, and yeah, it's just a lot of information all in one package. So yeah, thank you so much for everybody that contributed to this.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Two comments. One, fantastic, no cost. Always love to hear that. I'm also very happy to hear that we're going to provide some transitioning programming and orientations. I think that's going to be very important for a lot of new learners and learners that weren't in the district that were remote, so kudos for doing that. And my only question is, do we know how many students have been identified so far, Mrs. Regan?
We don't. I can give you an update on a couple of the programs. I know just our Kickstart Reading, for example, as of today, we've had, we have 38 kindergarteners and first graders. We keep getting that information back. We have interest. I'm very hopeful that we can run all of these programs. Again, staffing is also a key issue, and, and right now, we look like we're good to go on most every program, and we have a couple of holes to fill. But, you know, we want the groups small, meaning we'd like 10 to 12 students at most per teacher in most of our programs, but we certainly are looking to fill every seat. So we'll be able to update you when, in a July meeting, what those final numbers were.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Is there any residents this evening that wish to speak on any agenda item tonight? You can please step up to the microphone at this time. I ask that you please state your name and address for the record. And one other piece of business, this is the only time that you will be allowed to speak, so if you do have something that you want to say, please make sure that we get up and we speak during the Citizens Forum. Good evening, Mrs. Hud, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Erin Hud, and I live on 67 Catamount Road. I'm here tonight, again, to talk about the masking of our children in schools. Since the last committee meeting, DESI released updated guidance for the 2021-22 school year, which states that teachers, high school, and middle school students will not need to wear masks when inside the school buildings in the fall. However, a decision about masks for elementary students are to be made this summer. As a parent of a seven-year-old, this guidance is both frustrating and worrisome. During this pandemic, we have heard the words "trust the science," yet public health officials in Massachusetts are clearly ignoring the science when it comes to masking our children. We have learned so much over the last year about this disease, and one piece of evidence that you cannot refute is that children do not experience severe illness with COVID and rarely spread it. This threat to mask young children is wholly inconsistent with science and public health data. Multiple studies have shown that of the many mitigated measures tried in schools this year, the masking of children did not lead to decrease in COVID spread. Massachusetts has vowed to follow the science throughout the past 15 months and owes it to our children to follow the science now. I want to point out that in updated EEC guidance, so different than DESI, it recommends but no longer requires masks in indoor settings. So to think about this practically for my child in the fall, my child can go to a restaurant, a movie theater, a crowded sporting event, and even her after-school program maskless, but she will be forced to wear a mask during the school day. Now that we know better, my hope is that before the 2021-22 school year, that you will take a stand and protect our children and allow parents to decide what is best for their family. It should be up to each parent to make the best individual decision for the health and safety of their children. Multiple states have relaxed masking requirements, making them optional, while Texas, Iowa, and Utah have gone as far as banning masks in school. And most recently, just this week, Manchester, New Hampshire, just made masking in classrooms optional due to the extreme heat. Are we going to be known as the state that continue to harm children when the facts do not support mask-wearing in schools? Dr. Fauci himself said in his emails that masks found in drugstores are not effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material of a mask. So that means that the masks that most of you are wearing tonight and the people in this room, they do nothing. They do absolutely nothing, and that is straight from the words of Dr. Fauci. This alone should be enough for you to make a decision to unmask our kids now. We are demanding that you do the right thing for our kids and make masking optional. Parents will not stop fighting until you recognize that these masks are harmful and should not be forced upon our children. I said it last month when I stood before you, and I will continue to say, it is time to stop forcing our children to carry the burden of this pandemic when it does not apply to their specific circumstances. It is time to stop forcing children to wear masks because it makes the adults in the room feel comfortable. I shouldn't have to pull my child out of this school system because of the poor choices made by the adults who were elected to protect them. Do better for our children. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Dorian Healy, 53 Bodron Road, Borica, Mass. I wanted to discuss, well, I completely agree with everybody back here, just so they know that, but I'm sure they'll speak about that. And I did hear, too, it was interesting now that they're talking about the masks, is there was a little kid that spoke about masks, and it was really sad to hear from a little kid that he couldn't even see the teacher's face, so he didn't even know what she looked like. I mean, and this is so sad, there's so much social-emotional going on with these kids, that these masks, like, they have to end. It's not right for these kids. All right, so back to what I was really here for. The summer presentation, I don't know maybe if we can talk a little more about the transportation. If kids need transportation, they have to legally be able to access these programs. A lot of it is under Title I. I know the special ed, if there is a child that needs a special ed program, then Tewksbury's going to have to get a way to get them to transport there. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. I know work has been amazing going through this whole pandemic and dealing with everything, but I just want to make sure it's out there, that there is transportation, because some parents don't know that. So I think that really should be put out there to the whole district. And if we're having these other programs for Title I, we all know what Title I is, so maybe there's something we can put in there for transportation, because that's going to be very, very important. So that's pretty much. And my last thing is about the grades with the summer school. We're doing seventh and eighth, I guess, for recovered, if I heard that right. Is that what it is? I'm sorry.
Seventh through 12.
Seventh and 12?
Seven through 12.
Oh, seven through 12. Okay, I was getting confused, because there was some grades missing. But the seventh through 12, I just, it kind of gets to me because it red flags me is these kids that are trying to go into the TAC, their grades are part of the criteria getting in there. So they take seventh grade, and they take part of eighth grade. So I just want to make sure that these kids have an opportunity and say, there is an eighth grader that hasn't had good grades and lost points over there. I know that they have all the kids, I think, right now, they took like 360 kids, but there are kids on the waiting list. So if one of those kids are on the waiting list and they need that grade to get in there and put up their points, hopefully, after they do the credit recovery, that we give that opportunity to that child to go back and appeal to the TAC if they're going in there. I just, it's something I, they're not following their admissions over there to begin with anyways, but just so you people know, that might be something to look into for the guidance counselors, because they should go to, have a choice to go to either school. So that's it. But transportation is the most important part.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Healy. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Peter Foster. I live at 156 Marshall Street, and I'm a father of a first grader at the Doing. Tough to follow up, Erin, here, but I'll do my best, back to your guys' favorite subject. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to address the committee and say thank you for giving the opportunity. I'd like to start off by acknowledging that we know that some of you in the committee and the administration share the same ideals and viewpoints as we do. With that, we urge you to... With that, we urge you to start making these viewpoints more public and start to formally advocate for those viewpoints in our district, with the union, and all the way up to DESI. You are a committee and administration that works for us and we expect you to represent our ideals, thoughts, and wants of the district. In preparation of talking for this meeting, I thought about data and science that I'd wanted to highlight, but I knew that would continue to fall on deaf ears. I thought about discussing how the World Health Organization finally admitted that the PCR cycle thresholds have been abused and needed clinical diagnosis to give a positive case, or about the lack of any scientific evidence to back up six-feet social distancing measures, and then to reduce those to three feet, still backed up by no evidence, or the multitude of peer-reviewed studies in the New England Journal of Medicine or the Journal of American Medical Associations, they clearly show that asymptomatic people, AKA healthy people, do not spread the virus. Let's also not forget that Fauci admits this in an interview and now emails. Finally, I'd like to talk about the plain-sight evidence that masks versus non-mask environments are indistinguishable in the amounts of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Again, backed up by Fauci's own words that the virus is too small to be stopped by masks that the masks have been wearing for the last 16 months. Logic is fast, science is slow. I will bring up that these instances to make the point that we all know in our gut that these masks are doing nothing but harming our children physically and emotionally. We have an opportunity to continue, to not continue the mask, the mistakes that we, that our recent past has been so riddled with. Logic has won out every step in the way over the last 16 months. Let's not let these masks be the latest "I told you so." Our children are now allowed to be children in all places but school. They are allowed to go eat in large groups with maskless people, play with 200 to 300 other kids unmasked at trampoline parks, go with mom and dad to Home Depot with hundreds of other unmasked people, and even sit with 18,000 other unmasked people for three hours at a Bruin or Celtics game. If children are allowed to breathe freely in all these types of environments, why are schools different? Where is the science for this? What are you protecting them from? The excuses I hear are, what about the immunocompromised individuals? Well, I have sympathy for them, but what do these individuals do before COVID? No one is taking away their ability to protect themselves. Also, are these people still going to restaurants, stores, or events around other unmasked people? Another one, the masks are not bothering the kids. Well, if your child wanted to eat McDonald's every meal, every day, would you let them? I'm sure that wouldn't bother them either. In both cases, those individuals have the right to continue to protect, practice any protocols that they believe keep them safe. But the fears of a few should never be levied on the many. Masking should be a choice and in no way tied to school liability, vaccine availability, or the health of another. We are not an isolated group of people that have these viewpoints. School committees all over the country are being challenged and in some cases, being overrun and replaced. You have to ask yourself, why are masks driving these passionate outrages? Or something that supposedly, that supposedly keeping our kids safe with zero risk to them? Speaking of risk, we recently had many schools in the state either canceled or call for half-days because of the heat and the risk of children suffocating under their mask. Does this sound right? It didn't sound right to the Manchester School District. They did something about it. It didn't sound right to many New Jersey school districts and they stood up for their children and took the masks off for the health of their kids. How long will we sacrifice our children's education and experiences for those ridiculous protocols? I'm asking you to think of all of our children first. Stop making them carry the burden of our inactions. We are here and we will continue to be here until we feel that our children are their priority again. We can do this by stopping to send children mixed messages, by not letting your ideals and viewpoints be persuaded by politics or what others may think of you. A perfect example tonight is our beloved teachers that were, you know, going off into the sunset, had no problem intervening with everybody in this auditorium outside here with no mask on, and some of these people also had no mask on. But as soon as they found themselves in front of the camera, in front of the school committee, they decided to put their masks back on because, for whatever reason, maybe fear of thinking that they were taking this seriously or they wanted to put on a good face for the TV, I don't know. Things like that need to stop. They can do it out here, why are they wearing them here? Finally, before I step down, I want to plead with all the dads in the audience, all the dads watching live, all the dads that are going to watch this recording, we need you. Mother's have been the face of this movement and have been exceptional leaders, but we need you. We need to add strong masculine voices to stand for our children and let leadership know that we are united and we will be a handful.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Is there anyone else? Okay, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Rosetti. I'm at 682 South Street. I initially wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I came as a supporter to this team, to this movement, as a supporter to the parents and the guardians who want the same as I do, a choice. I've been a silent parent, a silent supporter, for the past 16 months. I silently said that we need to get more parents to speak up and stand up and be counted and let the world know that there are thousands of us across all the communities that are not okay with the mask mandate that is being levied on our children. I spent the past 16 months going along with the rules, going along with the status quo. I followed and done what I was told to do, doing what the person next to me was doing because it was easier than to deal with the confrontation and backlash from choosing to stand up from what I truly believed for fear that I was the only one. Over the past 16 months, I've become a better educated on current events. I've heard and watched the views and positions of individuals and leaders whose sentiments I can relate to be suppressed, as if those views and those positions have never taken place. Those views and positions have been ignored and silenced by all mediums of social media, by politicians, and now into our communities. Decisions are not made and they're not being made based on science. They're not being made based on common sense. The children can play on the playground with one another with no masks, they can go to indoor trampoline parks, seems to be the rhetoric today, and play with one another with no masks, and they can sit in restaurants with no masks. It makes no logical sense for our children to be sitting in a classroom or walking to and from a bathroom with a mask on. I am not here for confrontation, but rather as a voice for my children. I have two children, seven and five, who attend the Heathburg School here in Tewksbury. If they use their voice to stand their ground in class about choosing to not wear a mask, they'd probably get sent to the principal's office and I'd probably get a call to come and pick them up. No one wins when that happens. I shouldn't have to pull my child out of our public school system where I pay my taxes and place them in a different school or even attempt to homeschool them as a full-time career mom because of a mask mandate that is not practical and not based on any science. At home, I give my children choices. I tell them, use your words. I teach them to stand up for themselves if they're being bullied or they don't agree with something. Go find help, ask for help. I tell them, tell an adult. I tell them, use your voice. I'm here today to end my silence as a parent. I'm here to practice what I teach my children at home. I need to be their voice here and I need to be their voice right now. I need to stop being silent parent when I don't agree with the things that are going on around me and how it's impacting my children and those around them. Parents and guardians who are listening to this message, you need to stop being silent and you must be your child's voice. Stop conforming to what is perceived to be the norm. Masking our children is not normal and it is not predicated by science. You are not alone. We, here, we're not alone. No. I am here to say no. I am not in agreement with the current policies and mandating that masks be worn in schools and in classrooms by any of our children of any age. I'm here to ask for help, like I tell my children to ask for help. I'm asking for help from the parents and the guardians, asking for the help to take a stand to end this mask mandate in our schools. I'm here to ask each and every one of you who have a responsibility to yourselves, to us as a community, and to the children in your schools. I'm asking for your help and pleading for your vote to give the parents and guardians a choice. The choice to send their children to school with or without a mask at the parent or guardian's discretion. I have no issue, none whatsoever, with the parent or guardian who chooses to send their child to school with a mask. A parent or guardian should have that right. They should be able to choose whether or not their child goes to school with or without a mask. Masks should not be mandated. Masks should be a choice. I'm asking for a choice. I want my children to have a voice and a choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosetti.
Good evening. My name is Julie Gonzalez. I live at 20 Bryan Lane. Like Leslie, I wasn't planning on speaking. I was here for support and thought I would jump up here while I still had the nerve to speak my mind. You know, let's be real, we all have our own views, whether it's political, whether it's about vaccines and masks, and none of us are here to try and have their minds changed. We're all, you know, let's, you know, stand our ground and fight our side, but, you know, we need to be willing to reconsider. I've had to reconsider a lot of my own views over the past year. Anyway, it's not all of us against the committee, it's not parents against teachers, it's all of us for our children, and I believe that everyone here has their best interests in mind. My husband and I moved here three years ago. It's a beautiful town, beautiful people, we love the schools, and we have amazing teachers. We had a great year, great experience at the Heathburg School, and unfortunately, I'm one of the many parents who got to take my child out of Tewksbury Public Schools this year due to the emotional, mental, and physical impact on my seven-year-old daughter. In fact, her doctor noted the impact on her health and some of the problems due to the socialized isolation, isolation. Just a few days into remote learning, I realized this wasn't going to work for us. She needed constant help and was often in tears of frustration. It strained our relationship as I was not only her mom, but now her teacher, and it wasn't sustainable as a working parent to be helping her throughout the day. I want to acknowledge that what we have all been through throughout this past year, it's unimaginable, it's overwhelming. We've gone through a lot of fear, making decisions has been very difficult. I don't want to be in your seats, that's for sure. We and you had to make those difficult decisions to do what was best at the time based on the information that we had. Unfortunately, the return to school became quite a fiasco, and now the mask mandate has been lifted, and yet, we're still masking the children. We cover their faces all day in school and it's not clear the plan for next year. I'm lacking faith that the right thing will be done. So I've re-enrolled her for another year at a private school alone. Children are perhaps the lowest-risk population for COVID. They're not getting sick, they're not dangerous super-spreaders that we feared they would be, yet they're the ones we're masking up and reducing the oxygen flow to the developing brains and bodies. We keep hearing "trust the science." Well, the science has proved that our kids are neither at risk nor they are a threat. The science has proved that there is no benefit to these masks. Not only that, we're depriving our children of the joy of basic human interaction. A smile from a classmate, the approving look from a teacher that builds their confidence. That's so important, and I know from my own daughter, she told me how scary her teacher was at her new school, and she sounded like a real beast, so I went in to meet with her. And she was this adorable 70-something-year-old woman, sweet as pie, and I just, I think it was the lack of expression and only seeing a brow. She had the mask, the glasses, and she just saw a sliver of eye. Luckily, we got over that hump and she loves her teacher. Many of my friends in Tewksbury are nurses and some of them are here tonight. I've heard from them, the devastating impact on our youth, the mental health problems, suicides, and not having enough beds at facilities to help them. I haven't heard about COVID deaths in children from them. I've seen the incredible stress on these women who are working in pediatrics in children's hospital. And so it leads me to think, since we're not basing these decisions on science now, I believe they're based in fear, and I refuse to raise my child in fear or in isolation. She went to school full-time, in-person, all year. She played in aftercare and hugged her friends goodbye when I picked her up. At the beginning of this meeting, we all pledged allegiance to the flag for liberty and justice for all. That includes our children, and I remind you that they are our future.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Hi there. My name is Emma Tinko. I'm at 46 Sycamore Drive. I'm going to make this short and sweet since everybody's pretty much said how I feel. I'm basically here to support removing the masks from the children. I think it's absurd. You're teaching them to live in fear. There was 100 cases of COVID in Massachusetts today. You have a better chance of hitting the lottery than getting COVID in Massachusetts, so it's just, makes absolutely no sense, and I'm asking you, 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 do your job.
Hi, my name is Lisa Wilson and I live at 315 Lancaster Drive in Tewksbury. I'm a mother of fraternal twin boys that are eight years old. Isaac has a rare genetic disorder that causes severe intellectual disability, and Alexander, until this year, was doing great. Isaac has not worn a mask at all during this entire, and I, some of you may know him. Alexander, I put in private school this past year because I have an essential job. I'm a chemical engineer, electrical engineer, and a business leader for a global aerospace defense company, and I oversee critical teams, employees working on government contracts, so I have had to physically go to work every day and I could not oversee remote learning. So Alexander has gone to in-person learning the entire year for full days, including after-school care. He's been forced to wear a mask over his face the entire day, which is more than eight hours per day, and he is a compliant little boy and will do as he's told, so he doesn't take it off. He has always been a bright, happy kid, who's very social, loves his friends and loves God. This year, he started coming home crying at night, saying he could not focus during school, that he was trying so much, but he could just not get it done. He was complaining of health issues at school regularly, like headaches, stomachaches. I had many conferences with his teacher, who said he just couldn't seem to focus, so I brought him to his pediatrician. It was breaking my heart to see him so disappointed in himself. It was hard to understand because he'd always been so smart and happy. The symptoms seemed similar to ADD, so the doctor agreed to try him on some low-level stimulant to see if that would help him because he was having such difficulty in school and this former honor roll was now getting Cs and Ds. I requested an evaluation from Tewksbury Public Schools to see if he needed further support and to understand how bad the problem really was. Tewksbury acted quickly and did an amazing job in a very thorough evaluation. Did about 10 hours of testing covering all academic areas as well as a full psychological evaluation. It was only after reading this that I finally realized the problem. It's like a light bulb went off in the brain and I started reading everything I could on the signs of oxygen deprivation, which include confusion and inability to focus. I'll read you an excerpt from a research that was published on the National Institutes for Health website. Face masks may reduce available oxygen and increase air trapping, preventing substantial carbon dioxide exchange. The hypercaponic hypoxey may potentially increase acidic environment cardiac overload, anaerobic metabolism, and renal overload, which may substantially aggravate the underlying pathology of established chronic diseases. Further, contrary to the earlier thought, no evidence exists to claim that the face mask offer additional protection from the droplet transfer of the virus. One of the most starkly revealing and troublesome observations comes from Dr. Marguerite Grease Brison, MD/PhD, who's one of Europe's leading neurologists and neurophysiologists focused on neurotoxicity, environmental medicine... on neurotoxicity, environmental medicine, neural regeneration, and neuroplasticity. She has gone on record stating, "The rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide." We know that the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. There are neurons, for example, in the hypothalamus that cannot survive more than three minutes without an adequate supply of oxygen. Given that such cells are so sensitive to oxygen deprivation, their functionality must be affected by low oxygen levels. Oxygen deprivation can cause metabolic changes, and the metabolic changes that happen in neural cells are vitally important for cognitive functioning and brain plasticity, and it is known that when drastic metabolic shifts occur in the brain, there are consequent changes of oxidative stress, and these have significant role in managing neurological function. The acute warning systems are headache, drowsiness, dizziness, reduced ability to concentrate, reductions in cognitive function. Given that the development of neurodegenerative diseases can take years to develop, then what are the potential effects of the use of masks, especially in children, when masks are used for the majority of their day? We must consider this in a way that benefits versus the harm. Are the benefits enough to warrant use relative to the harm? If the harm outweighs the benefits, then we can't in good conscience advocate for mask use. Moreover, the continual and stressful impacts of masking will have known an impact on the immune systems of these children. A child exposed to nature has little defense against a minor illness, which can become overwhelming due to the lack of a primed immune system, or a robust immune system shortens illness. They get this from being exposed. Preventing children from having interactions with nature and regular germs does have serious consequences to their health. We might be setting up our children for future disaster when they emerge something else. A German-wide registry used by twenty thousand, over twenty thousand, parents reported data from almost twenty-six thousand children, found that the average wearing time of a mask was two-hundred-seventy minutes per day. Impairments caused by the mask were reported by sixty-eight percent of the parents. These included irritability, headache, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, reluctance to go to school, malice, impaired learning, and drowsiness. I'd like to read to you a couple excerpts from the report provided to me from the Tewksbury evaluation of my boy. Alexander reported enjoying his current year because it's Christian and I'm doing well in Bible class. When asked what is difficult, he shared that it's always been hard to focus. I'd like to note that Bible is the first class in the day when his oxygen is still high. Another excerpt. The WISCV was administered to Alexander to obtain a sense of his cognitive strengths, weaknesses, and learning style. His overall performance general ability index fell within the very high range, GAI 127.96%. So why can't he do anything after the first hour of the day, all of a sudden? Including cognitive abilities much more developed for his age when compared to same-age peers. I'd like to note this test was performed first thing in the morning. The BSC3 report filled out by his teacher indicated that he was at risk for somatization. I had to look up what that word meant, I'd never heard it before. It is defined in Oxford Dictionary as "the production of recurrent and multiple medical symptoms with no discernible organic cause." This is in the Tewksbury report. I can assure you that this doesn't happen in my home. He's not a hypochondriac, doesn't ever complain of illness, and it's never been reported from the school before. I no longer believe that these symptoms are strictly due to ADD. I do believe he needs oxygen. He can't breathe with a cloth over his face suffocating him the entire day, and he's too compliant to take it off and do wrong. What is happening to him and all of these children's is abuse, being done at the hands of those who are supposed to be protecting them. The definition of child abuse is this: "A non-accidental action which causes or creates substantial risk of physical or emotional injury to a child." The current face mask policies fit this definition. The education system has violated social, ethical, and professional contracts to keep our children safe, and instead views the position to knowingly cast children in harm with abuse tactics of psychological manipulation. The battle lines regarding COVID-19 have been drawn around the concept of masking. Wearing a mask has become a symbol of staying together or doing something to protect someone from getting sick. Wearing a mask has become nearly a cult-like participation, and for some, it's even a fashion statement. The behavior of those who obsessively wear a mask and scream at others who don't has led to a social divide within our communities. Fear and compliance coupled with greater political agendas have led to the lack of sound judgment when making critical decisions that affect our community, our families, and our children. There is no more hiding behind a self-righteous position than masking these young children is protecting lives. We all know that's a bunch of crap at this point. We've seen the emails from Dr. Fauci. I'll read you an excerpt, one that is recent. "Masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected, rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring. The typical mask you buy in a store is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material." We've all seen this. And now it gets worse. "Moving beyond the first stage of abuse to an unthinkable act of irreversible harm by promoting, coercing, and further manipulating children to become subjects of massive medical experimentation using our tax-funded facilities and staff to inject healthy, risk-free children with a risky, unapproved pharmaceutical product. No one has any idea whether these shots will cause infertility, or cancer, or what the long-term effects of these children will be. Once that experimental shot is injected, there is no undoing it. If an entire generation is rendered infertile as a result of this medical experimentation on children, there will be no going back. Remember the Nazi doctors tried at Nuremberg. They were not pardoned on grounds that they were just following orders from their superiors. All persons of authority who are complicit in committing these crimes against humanity on our children will be held accountable for the irreversible damage that they are inflicting. OSHA has already come out and stated that any employer enforcing vaccinations will be liable for the adverse effects. Our children are not human test subjects for the pharmaceutical industry. Our school tax dollars are not to be spent in promoting, marketing, coordinating, or implementing medical experimentation on children, and especially not within the institutions designed to provide education. We demand that this immediately stop, and that these COVID-related restrictions, face masks, vaccine promotion, stop. If teachers' unions will not comply with these demands, we urge all the big-hearted, child-loving teachers to withdraw from these extortionist unions. And believe me, we know there are a lot of big-hearted, child-loving teachers out there who are just as fed up as we are. In fact, the last time I was here at a school board meeting, you may remember, I was here to give flowers to a teacher, Ms. Mary Abbott, who saved my child's life by performing the hymen maneuver. And we know there are many wonderful teachers who love these children. If a school teacher is fearful of their workplace, we suggest they find an alternate career path, rather than insisting on uses of practices that harm our children. As school board members, you have been entrusted with overseeing the education of our children, and that is all. Your promotion of pharmaceutical products in the school is inappropriate abuse of power and may even qualify as providing medical advice without a license. It needs to end. The precautionary principle is a psychological and legal approach to innovations that possess a potential cause for harm when extensive scientific knowledge on the matter is lacking. It is often used in policymaking when there is the possibility of harm and conclusive evidence is not yet available. It implies that there is social responsibility to protect the public from harm when scientific investigation has a plausible risk. These precautions should only be relaxed when scientific findings provide sound evidence that no harm will result. In shutting down schools and decimating the social lives of children, policymakers rashly abandon the sound principle, instead thrusting children to known scientifically proven harm. It's well documented that social health directly impacts mental and physical health, and traumatic disruption of social constructs at school, sports, church, family gathering, has devastating effects, especially on children and teens. Our youth were already suffering epidemic levels of depression, anxiety, addiction, eating disorders, and suicide, yet policymakers chose to exacerbate this devastation on children's mental health, even when there's no evidence that returning to normal would pose a risk to them at all. And even as all the evidence continued, and to this day shows COVID-19 to pose nearly zero harm to children, those charged with protecting the children choose harmful and abusive policies. It needs to stop. The abandonment of the precautionary principle with regard to our children's health has caused catastrophic consequences that will span generations. I'm not alone in my beliefs. As you see here tonight, there are hundreds of members of the Tewksbury community that stand with me and are willing to fight for the lives and the health of our children. We're willing to stand up for what is right. We love our children, and we will do anything to protect them. Our children will not wear masks in the fall. We will be sending our children to school without a mask. Our children are exempt under both ADA and IDEA, and we have no obligation to answer questions or provide documentation. Any request to do so violates ADA. As of May 2021, all teachers and faculty that want to get vaccinated have been vaccinated. We will be bringing the children to the building without a mask, and you have the responsibility to make sure that they get educated. Any parent or teacher who wants to wear a mask is free to do so. They can easily purchase a well-fitted N95 mask, which is best to protect. If there are any problems, we'll be forced to take further legal action against the school system and any individuals that are noncompliant. If you try to force our children to wear masks, we will be bringing charges against you for unapproved restraint. We also reserve the right to sue under 42 U.S.C. Section 1983. We are not going to allow our children to continue to be abused. It's up to you now to decide if you want to work with us, or if you want an all-out fight in the fall, because we are ready. We are a part of a large network of people across the state and nation who are prepared to do whatever it takes. There are many members of law enforcement and community leaders who are supporting us, and we have significant legal resources being donated to our cause. We are motivated only by love. There is no hidden agenda. We love our children so much, and we cannot see them suffering for no logical reason. Please help to protect these innocent lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Hi, Sarah Steele, 10 Pocahontas Road. I've spoken in front of the five of you now twice, this will be the third time, and every time I've stood up to ask a question, I've asked my question, and then I've been given a question back. Is this on the agenda? This? No offense. This was not on the agenda, so I would hope in the future the five of you give me and the sped department the same respect that you just gave all of these people to speak.
My name is Robin Hanley. I'm at 2 Hillcrest Road. I have a seven-year-old in the Dewing School. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, I don't have anything prepared. This is my first school committee meeting. I am curious, and whether we can do the back and forth right now or before the end of the meeting, I would ask each individual, you know, up there, you know, the five of you, if you support lifting the mask mandate today on the children, and if not, what would it take? What would you need to see, whether it be community pressure, if there was three hundred people in here? Would that be enough? If you need more data, if you need, what would you need? I ask each of you individually.
Excuse me, Mr. Hanley. With all due respect, it's Hanley, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Hanley. This is an opportunity for citizens, for residents, to get up, okay? It's not a, we're going to come up here and we're going to Q and A the school board as to where people personally stand with individual issues. If you would like to hang around, if you would like to email me, I'll give you my phone number, I will be more than happy to talk to you anytime offline, but this is not, as the young woman, which I don't believe was correct, what you stated, because you asked questions, so I don't know if you were...
Can you say it's on the agenda? If of course, we can go back on you to who we like.
Yes, you can.
And you have physically said to me, it's on the agenda. Their issue is not on this agenda. We've now been sitting here for over forty minutes discussing it. I agree with you guys, it's fascinating that all of you have joined together to fight this company. But we have been fighting as a CPAC for years, for and out of respect, that you have all received. Just coming here today, you are not on the agenda. I am sorry, but you're not.
Mrs. Steele, with all due respect, please address any concerns that you have through the chair. We're not here to get into a given, this isn't, we're going to make conversations in between, this is a public meeting.
Right.
Okay? And we are going to decide. I, you spoke, with all due respect, I have the floor, thank you. I've never used this, I don't want to start using it tonight. I have the floor. I'm certain I'm entitled to that respect.
You're sure?
Thank you, thank you. I have the floor.
You address me.
I have the floor, thank you.
You still address me.
Okay? This is not what the meeting is. The agenda is...
I did preface saying that, I don't know, you know, it's the first one I've been through, but I would appreciate, I think a lot of people would appreciate, by the end of the night at some point, if you would publicly make your views known on those two questions. I mean, I don't think that's unfair. I mean, you guys are the ones that are in charge at this point, I mean, you know, as far as the school is.
I do work with you, yes I do.
It's not meant to, anybody's not meant to, but like, I don't know where you two stand on that. I actually genuinely want to know what it would take to change your views, or whatever it would take. Money? No, I don't mean, you know what I'm saying, but I mean, pressure, data, whatever it is. I'm just curious.
Game.
Exactly, that's all. And that's all I, thank you.
I don't have any game, man. Thank you all for attending tonight, and thank you for speaking. Before we move to the approval of minutes, Mr. Malone, I believe we have some people here from the John, is it the Wind Middle School? Regarding the eighth-grade Washington trip?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Principal Ware, Mr. Gillespie, Mr. Long here from the Wind Middle School, if you want to come on up real quick, and they're going to do a quick presentation just of the status of the traditional Washington DC trip, which we unfortunately were not able to do this year. They've done a great deal of planning and fact-finding in regards to continuing on this trip for next year. It does require a long timeframe to plan, so I think they can let you kind of know where they're at and what the next steps they need to do, and I think what they're seeking is a direction from the school committee on how far they can move ahead.
Okay. Prior to getting there, Mr. Malone, as a procedural, I'd just like to...
I'm sorry, I would ask, Mr. Chair, that we take this out of order along with the handbooks that are on the new business, and insert them at this, I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
No problem.
Bring them in at this point of the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the new business A, B, C, D, E, and F agenda items to right now.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to move agenda items, noted, DC trips, and the handbooks. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote. Mr. Ware, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gillespie, in the past many years, has run a great, successful, enriching program to DC for our municipal students. It's been a great experience for them, and unfortunately, the past two trips, due to last year and this year, have had to be canceled, and he's proposing a trip for next year, next spring, which does require a lot of upfront work. It allows parents time to make payments for the trip and ensures us keeping certain dates locked in by guaranteeing hotel spaces and restaurants and so on. So Mr. Gillespie has forwarded the proposal to you, I think you've had a chance to read it. He can answer specific questions regarding the trip. He's included an issue that became, you know, very relevant in the first cancellation there, is specific to refund policy, and so I think you'll be able to touch upon that a little bit as well, if you have specific questions regarding that. Thank you.
I have some questions, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Gillespie, looking through your proposal, thank you for sharing it with us. I was a little bit unclear on why, do you have the return policy and all the money information for the parents in writing? I wasn't convinced that this company was fully prepared for this plan. It is a new company. To us, as somebody who is still fighting with EF Tours for refunds, I can speak firsthand that it's a little bit frustrating. So I do wish that I had a little bit more in writing from this company, so if you could kind of fill in the blanks for what's not in here for us, so I could fully understand.
Okay, I believe the latest proposal did have some information on their SEFAR. So basically, the breakdown is, and the one thing that was different from EF, and I do apologize for the headache, I was dealing with those all last summer as well.
Oh, yeah, no, please, that's not on you.
The, so the SEFAR, the cancel-for-any-reason insurance is actually built into the door cost this year, so...
Yeah, I did see that, but what would be the total incurred by the family that would not come back? I guess like, I would like to have...
So the only part that wouldn't be refunded would be the premium for the insurance, which is, again, part of the plan, so everything, all other monies that were paid up to that point would be refunded by the... the insurance company and the tour company.
Right. And I definitely think that that date that conflicted with the high school, we should be looking at the May if we're going to continue looking into this to plan. I would be looking at that. I would support the May, because I think you're going to have a lot of families with conflicting times. Yeah.
That's always the issue that we run is like that, where that high school graduation falls and...
Yeah. Yeah. No, I understand that. That's stuff that's, you know, a little out of control. But I still had some pending questions and things. I definitely think there's some more information I would like to have on this. I wouldn't be totally against it, but I'm not fully convinced that this is a...
Anything in particular that I could answer for you?
A company that we should be investing our time in just yet.
Okay. So after the events of last year, myself and a few of the other teachers that were involved with planning, we did a lot of research on a number of other tour companies, large ones and small ones. And we were kind of leaning away from the big corporate tour companies, because, again, they were dealing with a lot of the same issues. It wasn't just EF, you know, as Explorer Bear and World's Ride. They were all... I had a daughter who was trying to go to Europe last year, and that got canceled as well. And we were still dealing with issues there.
Right.
So the reason that we decided to look at this small company is they were able to offer... They had between... It's a husband-and-wife company that they essentially run these tours together. They've been part of these large tour companies for years, so they had the experience that we were looking at, but also having that kind of personal touch that we were looking for. They were actually highly recommended from a gentleman that I have been on tours with, who does some work with EF, does some work with Disney Tours and other stuff. So he knows a lot of like the who's who in these different tour companies. And they came very highly recommended from him. And after the conversations that I had with the owners of the company, and after discussing it with the other teachers that were a part of it, we thought that this was the best option to go with. They're able to offer everything that EF does, but that was one thing, is we didn't want to lose that aspect of it, because we liked the quality of the tour. I mean, I know they were a little bit pricier than some other tour companies, but when we were actually out on tour, the quality of what they were able to offer was something that we didn't want to lose.
So the 75% and 25% and all that was mentioned in this document, the final money is definitely just the insurance premium, which would not be refunded?
Correct.
At all. And that's a hun... What was it, $100?
$50, I believe.
Oh, $50?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll defer to the rest of the committee. Those are my questions.
Mr. Stadman, any questions?
I don't have any. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
I have no questions.
And Mrs. Garabedian?
Yeah, I have a couple. Mr. Gillespie, thank you so much for trying to keep this tour alive, because I know there are a lot of disappointed people in the last couple of years.
Yeah. Myself among them.
Yeah. It's a huge undertaking, and thank you. So one thing I really liked is that you talked about adding a second fundraiser to offset the cost. I love that, so that, you know, costs shouldn't, you know, prohibit students from wanting to attend. So I look forward to that. The itinerary looks great. I, you know, you have some great stuff in there. It is unfortunate that it would fall over graduation, but I understand your restrictions. And from what I understood, it would be $950 per student with a $50, like, as you mentioned, would not be reimbursed if there was a cancellation.
That is correct.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't have as much experience as other people may, but to me, those are the things that stood out and looked good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And once again, thank you, Mr. Gillespie. I think it's great you want to get back on track. I hope we can get back on track here for you tonight. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board? All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve... I assume you're looking for approval here tonight?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Washington, D.C. trip as presented this evening by Mr. Gillespie.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Washington, D.C. trip. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair... One sec.
I... No, I will support the trip.
Okay.
Yep.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Gillespie, for bringing this back to our students. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for those kids, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, may I make a quick comment, too?
Sure.
I love this field trip, and it's a great opportunity. I just want to bring up, as a member of the policy review team, just want to remind the committee and the superintendent that we still need to review and update the current travel and overnight trip policy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. And where would we like to start with the handbooks? Mr. Malone.
Chair, I hand it off to Mr. Regan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should start right at the beginning with the PK through four handbook. In the interest of saving some time, you've had the handbooks, and I appreciate the input I've received from the committee on some needed edits to this handbook. It's nice that we still have Principal Garrish, Principal McGinnis, and Principal Ware with us in case we have any specific questions. So without going through every edit of the PK through four handbook, I'd just like to draw your attention to some of the recent edits, and that is the arrival and dismissal portion of the PK through four handbook, particularly page five and 13. What has been deleted since the last time you had this handbook in front of you is that grid of all of the current, this school year, traffic patterns. And as you know, the schools worked hard and adapted those traffic patterns several times, especially when we came back to in-person learning for the full day. So what I want to share with you is what they have done is made a consistent approach on page five to highlight the dismissal... I'm sorry, the arrival, drop-off, and dismissal times and procedures that are consistent at each school. Each school will communicate to the parents when school opens exactly what those traffic patterns will look like as needed for the beginning of next school year. So these sometimes change, and the handbook wasn't the place for them. And certainly will work with their communities and neighborhoods to make sure those traffic... And I should say, the Tewksbury Police Department to make sure the traffic patterning and the drop-off and pickup is safe at each school with a full return of all students. Also, I'd like to just make note of page 25 and 26, where we added the Title IX and Chapter 6 to 2 policy. As you know, that policy is being... Or just a piece of that policy is being looked at, and it's in its informational reading tonight, as it has been updated with changes to the law. But most specifically, under the counsel of our school attorney, we added a small clause to page 25, which talks about... Let me just go to that. You probably have already read it. Just students making false claims, students knowingly making false claims in information around bullying, harassment in the Title IX procedures. So I didn't go through every bullet. I didn't know if you had any questions particularly, but there's been some consistency with the PK four handbook that is also, you might see, in the Ryan Wynn in High School, particularly around the language we use around drills. So whether it's the fire drill, an alarm procedure, lockdown, lockout, Alice, we thought it was important that parents see the same language in all of the handbooks. And again, I think, thank you, Ms. Dean Most. That was a wonderful suggestion, and we updated the handbook immediately to make sure that all parents were aware of that, those definitions.
Thank you.
Do you want me to keep going, or do you want to...
I'll just check in with my colleagues. Does anyone have any questions regarding the K through four? Seeing none, I think we can move on. Mrs. Regan, thank you.
The Ryan has just some slight changes. Specifically, we added the page numbers and a link back to the dynamic table of contents. Sorry about that. And again, we added the Title IX language and the clause that we were advised to put, and some typos have been fixed. So this handbook is much the same as what you saw with very few changes. The Wynn Middle School really cleaned up some clarifying language. As you can see, all the way through page 16, they updated the attendance absentee notification for parents on page 27. And then again, that clause added under Title IX. And then you can see very few changes were made to the high school handbook, other than some of the clarifying new calendar dates, the table of contents, the letter from the continuing principal, Mr. John Bernard, and that Title IX clause added to this handbook. All handbooks will be... Upon your approval of them, will be uploaded to the school websites.
Open it up to my colleagues. Any comments, questions, concerns? With that, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept PK through four, John Ryan, John Wynn, and the T... Tewksbury Memorial High School as presented in June 9th school committee meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the...
PK through four, John Ryan, John Wynn, and Tewksbury Memorial High School handbooks.
All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And thanks for our principals for hanging around in case there was any questions. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. That takes us to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, for our approval of minutes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 12, 2021, regular school committee meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the May 12, 2021 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any no? The ayes have it. And our submission and payment of bills, Mrs. Garabedian?
I move the school department payroll for the period ending to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,431,822.64, date 5/13/2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending May 13, 2021, on the amount of $1,431,822.64. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 5/27/21 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,447,951.72.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending May 27, 2021, on the amount of $1,447,951.72. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. The payroll for May 27 is approved. I'd like to now turn it over to our superintendent for a superintendent report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items. Once again, thank you to our retirees this evening. Certainly an outstanding aspect of our programming here in Tewksbury, and they'll certainly be missed, but we congratulate them on all their success. Certainly, one of the aspects we've been looking at in the school district for the past couple of days is certainly the heat. The outside temperature has been pretty high. We've put in some mitigation strategies, particularly over the weekend. We had custodians come in on Sundays, turn on air conditioners, open windows, get some hallway fans moving to get some air through. Although we've sharply increased the number of air-conditioned spaces in the district, not every space is air-conditioned. So we certainly have to monitor that, make movement of students necessary when that has to happen, and utilize our outside spaces, particularly the tents outside the schools. So the good news is the weather is breaking as of tomorrow, according to the reports we've heard, but it's certainly been a difficult couple of days. Hats off to all of our staff members for all the hard work they've done, for all the custodians trying to do some of that extra work to keep our areas cool. And thank you to our students and parents for dressing appropriately and having those extra water bottles and other things like that available to them. That's great work. As we approach the end of the year, which actually is, the end of the school year is a week from today. One of the effects of this pandemic is somewhat of a loss of traditional patterns of timing, and I think the end of the year has certainly snuck up on us a little bit here. You saw, as a result of some of that summer school planning, several of those grants that Dr. Bastieri described only came out last week. So the availability to actually write those grants, submit for those grants, and plan for those grants is extensive, and we thank her and Ms. Regan for all their hard work on that. But as we move towards the end of the school year, we are certainly in the midst of collecting a lot of our technology that we've handed out during the year, looking at best practices to have over the summer and for the fall. But it is a little bit unusual of a patent that we're typically not used to, so it's a little bit rushed at the end of the year. But I think everyone is very happy to get through this process. A reminder that graduation is coming up this Friday, June 11, which will be outside here at the Field. High school team has been doing a great deal of work to set that up. We appreciate all that work. Also, a big congratulations to one of our staff members that was here earlier this evening, had to leave to attend a lacrosse game, and that's Mr. Drewin, our athletic director. The National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association is pleased to announce that Ronald Drewin, Director of Athletics at Tewksbury Memorial High School, has been recognized as an NIAA, as a certified athletic administrator. That's a pretty rigorous course load and application process to go through that. Certainly, we congratulate Mr. Drewin for continuing on his professional growth. That's a great feather in his cap and a great feather in the cap for Tewksbury Public Schools. Alphabet will continue to offer programming through the summer and into the fall. Their actually registrations are going above what they anticipated. We're working with them for... To establish some additional space beyond the rec center down at the Livingston complex and likely going to be working with them to use some additional space at the Wynn School this summer due to the large number of their enrollment, which is great. They'll also continue on with their before-school and after-school programming in the fall. The committee was able to bring in Dorothy Presser as a MAS C trainer to help with our two newest members and also conduct a open-meeting law review for our members and for members of our CPAC as well. So we thank her for her support. The 2021 awards and scholarship ceremony took place on May 27. What a great night that was with the amount of scholarships and awards that were given out, several hundred thousand dollars in scholarships and great awards. It's just one of the highlights of the year, and we're very proud that that took place. That's all I have for quick updates right now, Mr. Chairman. I'll hand it off to Ms. Regan, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Any questions over here?
No questions.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sure will be happy when we're back in the regular room. This is a lot juggling the papers. So sorry for the noise I may be making in the front row here. First of my updates is for parents. It's about school supplies for the next school year. Our K-8 schools have updated their school supplies, so that parents who... And students who'd like to look at that ahead of time and get ready for those sales that come out can view those school supply lists on our school websites. The Tewksbury Memorial High School teachers usually inform the students at the start of each of their scheduled classes what they may need to be successful in their class. Move-up days for our elementary schools, specifically North Street, Treyhan, Ryan, and Middle School, are currently underway or have already taken place. These events, which usually include a bus ride to the next step-up school, have been done remotely this year due to the various requirements of the pandemic. They've participated in virtual tours, video presentations from the principals, from staff, from students. We will have all of those schools post whatever video presentations and orientations they've done. those schools post whatever video presentations and orientations they've done onto the website, so parents and students that weren't able to be part of that while it was happening have a chance to view them all over the summer. I also just want to really make a note for parents that are here or that are watching. Our principals and teachers truly realize that all of our students may start the school year a little bit more stressed and anxious than they may typically start the year. They plan to take a slower pace to lessen that student anxiety coming back, especially to a new school. And that leads me to the next topic in my update, the Acceleration Roadmap: A Pathway to Recovery, a document that probably Ms. Demos and Mr. Parsons have heard about. It's a new tool, a comprehensive tool, published by the Department of Education for teachers and administrators in the state of Massachusetts. It's designed to provide, and I'm going to read a little bit from the Acceleration Roadmap because it's a very crucial document that we're working with. It's designed to provide a focused and phased approach to supporting students as they begin the 21, 22 school year, a year that will lay the foundation for accelerated learning over the next several years. The roadmap is organized around three overarching priorities, which are grounded in research and were developed through extensive stakeholder feedback. These priorities are to foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families, continuously monitor students' understanding, and by doing so, ensure strong grade-appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they are needed. Within each priority, our approaches are designed to create equitable experiences and outcomes for all of our students in a manner that is affirming of their race, identity, home language, and unique abilities. It is priority two that is the focus of our summer curriculum work for our Tuxbury teachers, and they will be creating a multitude of formative assessments using Otis and other data analytical tools for that continuous monitoring process of student progress next year, so we can offer those just-in-time scaffolds. Our PD planning, which I think you saw the annual staff survey that I sent out to all the staff, next year will also merge our district goals with those acceleration goals. Ironically, our district goals are quite aligned with this acceleration document. If you remember, our goals align fostering a sense of belonging, that all means all, student progress monitoring, that teaching and learning cycle, how will I know? What will I do to improve instruction, and the database scaffolding decisions, which really align to our collaborative practice process. So additionally, there'll be summer PD opportunities available to not only our teachers but our admin team with a focus on those three priorities. You can expect to hear much more about this throughout the summer and on into the next school year. And then finally, I just want to remind anybody who's watching or still here, as Mr. Malone said, next Wednesday, a week from today is our last day. That is an early release day for all of our students and our staff. And that concludes my updates.
Great. Thank you. Next, Bridgette.
No questions.
No questions. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Good evening. Just a brief update. Called your attention to something in the consent agenda, first item in the consent agenda in your packet. Tuxbury was awarded the amount of our ESTER III grant this past week. We were granted $2,771,743 as part of the American Rescue Plan. Money must be spent by September 24th of 2024. Allowable costs are very similar to ESTER I and ESTER II, which are pretty liberal in the way we can use those funds. The difference with this ESTER III is a requirement of each city and town that receives these funds to make a plan for safer return to students publicly on our school website. Our current plan meets this requirement already. We have to consult with stakeholder groups and formulate a plan for the use of the funds, and they're specific on who those stakeholder groups must include: students and families, school and district administrators, teachers, principals, school staff and their unions, civil rights organizations, and representatives of childrens with disabilities, ELL, homeless, foster, migratory, and justice-involved students. So, we're going to be looking for some stakeholder input for how we write this grant over the summer, likely. 20% of the ESTER III funds must be used to address the impact of lost instructional time, which is probably what a lot of that money will be going towards later on in the grant, the grant life. Those could include after-school summers and enrichment programs in our schools, similar to what we saw presented already tonight, this summer. And then our plan must include how we spend, obviously, the remaining 80% of the funds, and how the district will ensure that interventions will respond to academic, social, emotional, mental health needs of students, particularly those disproportionately impacted. So, we have a little bit of work to do before we write this grant. It's due in October, the Department of Ed, so we'll be beginning that outreach to our stakeholder groups likely end of the summer, maybe into the early fall. And that was all I had to report on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Bridgette, any?
Thank you.
Good. John? Good. Thank you, Mr. Libby. All right. Nice segue there on the consent agenda. I'm just going to ask my colleagues if anyone has any questions or comments regarding tonight's consent agenda.
Not at this time.
Bridgette?
No, not at this time.
Ms. Demos?
Nope.
Mr. Stadman?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Entertain a motion then.
Make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda as presented in the school committee binder.
Second that.
Great. I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to committee reports. We're going to start with Mrs. Demos and the Elementary School Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Elementary School Building Committee has met recently. Things are starting to really progress. It's really fun and exciting when you drive by now and you can actually see for yourself the progress that is happening. It's been years in the making, and it's exciting to see it all coming to fruition. The interior framing and exterior walls have gone up, begun to go up. The loop road around the building has taken shape. The initial turf installation on the athletic field is in process, and almost all the exterior and some of the interior of the field house has been completed. We really kind of make some big strides right now. We, we're working on, we'll be sharing the school name and other details at a later date, but that's what we're working on now.
Great. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. And the Tuxbury CPAC, Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 19th, Bridgette, Gabia, and myself met with the CPAC just to listen to and voice what is going well and what needs to be done better for our students. We reviewed and established meeting norms and communication guidelines, and began the first steps of collectively drafting a vision statement that will serve as a kind of north star to guide our important and complicated work together. On May 20th, the CPAC had their annual business meeting. That was attended by myself, Ms. Garabedian, Superintendent Malone, Assistant Superintendent Regan, and our Director of Special Education Services, Rick Pelletier, amongst others. We discussed the possibility of adding a student representative from the high school to the advisory committee, possible routes to fundraises in order to do things like fund professional development or have guest speakers, amongst others. The CPAC leadership will present the annual review. I don't want to say too much more. Loosely related, Tuxbury held the Special Olympics for our in-district student athletes. It was really refreshing and great to get updates and photos from several individuals in the community. I also wanted to recognize the work of every committee member, staff member, parent and volunteer that made that happen. That was put together over 10 days. Am I getting that right? That's really impressive, and that was really great, and I've only heard great things about that. I especially want to recognize the work of Bridgette and Athletic Director Ron Druin as well. They're instrumental in making this happen. That said, I'd like to turn it over to the CPAC leadership to share their annual report.
Thank you. Good evening, Tuxbury School Committee members, administration, and members of the public. My name is Ann Seichter. This is Deana Mancini, and we are the co-chairs of the Tuxbury Special Education Parents Advisory Council. The Tuxbury Special Education PAC is a public body which serves as advisors to the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. This is a legally mandated organization per the Massachusetts Department of Education. In addition, the CPAC has a duty to meet regularly with the school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. Our CPAC is a group of parents and interested parties who have children on IEPs or 504s. Together, we work to support each other through the process of raising children with disabilities. The CPAC hosts meetings and informational workshops regarding special education. This year, despite the pandemic, we are proud of what we were able to accomplish. Through a Zoom account and the use of the town's WebEx platform, we were able to conduct our business meetings virtually. We hosted a basic rights workshop virtually as well, and we saw an increase in participation during our meetings this year. In addition, this year, we started a family support group. We held three family support sessions that were also well-attended. Our hope is to continue these sessions next year in an effort to connect families to each other and give families support from other people who understand what they're experiencing. The CPAC also hosted a very well-attended, over 40 participants, Meet the Candidates Night, in which we invited all of the school committee candidates to answer questions from the CPAC members. This night was hosted by high school senior Libby Miller. Recently, we have been meeting with the Special Education Director to discuss summer planning, the search for a new Assistant Special Education Director, and other initiatives. At our most recent May business meeting, new officers were elected. Ann and I will continue to serve as the co-chairs, and the rest of the board is as follows: Maureen Castiglione as a recording secretary, Peg Ricardo as a publicity secretary, and parents-at-large, Sarah Cohen, Michelle Haley, Al Mancini, Sarah Steele, and Tricia White. We also had the pleasure of having our two school committee liaisons at our most recent school meeting as well. We also voted to create a committee, a subcommittee, to advise the school committee of school safety concerns and review current safety policies of the district through the lens of better supporting students with disabilities. It is our hope that this subcommittee will have a presentation ready in the fall of 2021 with recommendations on areas the district can approve upon with respect to school safety. Tomorrow night, we will have our final parent support group of the school year. Any parent or caregiver is welcome to attend. It is from 7:00 to 8:30 PM on Zoom, and if you're looking for information, you can connect with us on Facebook or via email. Our email is tuxburycpac, S-E-P-A-C, at gmail dot com. Looking forward to next year. Our goals include continuing our parent support groups, returning to family engagement events once concerns regarding COVID are minimized, continuing to meet with the Special Education Director regularly to support the district in matters pertaining to the health, safety, and education of students with disabilities. Finally, we're looking to improve communication with the school committee as a whole. We're looking forward to being able to meet with the entire school committee to discuss how we can better communicate and advise them. This is an area we'd like to see some significant improvement. We're really proud of the accomplishments from this last school year. We hope that families have found a place of understanding and acceptance, and we hope that more families will continue to seek us out for support. You can find us on Facebook in two places, either the Friends of CPAC group or the public Tuxbury CPAC business page. Please feel free to connect with us at any time during the summer and during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mancini and Ms. Seichter, and also thank you for all the work you do and all the members on your board. That's very important work, so thank you very much. With that, we're going to turn to Mrs. Garabedian for a wellness update.
So I have spoken with our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino. The meetings will resume in September, and they will meet quarterly. She has some tentative dates, so hopefully at our next meeting next month, maybe those will be concrete dates that I can share.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving along to policy changes. Mr. Stadman?
Okay, so we have a second and final reading tonight of IHBG of homeschooling, and with that, I believe there's a vote needed. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are you making a motion to approve the-
Oh, sure.
-homeschooling?
I would like to make a motion for IHBG homeschooling.
Okay.
You know, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the homeschooling IHBG policy. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, and just one comment I would like to thank. I know there was a couple people from the community that had reached out. I believe Mrs. Demos started this work, and Mr. Stadman's getting over the finish line, so I just want to acknowledge those stakeholders that reached out and their participation, so. With that, I think we have a first revision as well. Mr. Stadman?
Yes, informational reading. We have ACAB for harassment. We'll be working on that later on, so.
Okay, and this policy is included in the packet?
Yes.
And similar to the homeschooling, for those in the audience and those at home, if you do have any questions, comments, or concerns, this is just putting out to the public, so please feel free to reach out to Mr. Stadman or anyone on the school committee if you have any comments or concerns regarding that policy. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Moving on to old business. We're going to turn it over to Mr. Malone for a discussion of more in-person learning time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update. Our Community Services Preschool has returned to back full days, which was kind of our last element to get back in full days, so we're very proud of that. Also, just update the committee, and I think you've seen it, coming out of the state in DECE, that there will not be a remote learning option in the fall, so we look forward to a full return with all students in the fall. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, turn the floor over to Mrs. Regan for her MCAS update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my final MCAS update of the school year. We just received an update from the department that the 2021 MCAS window of testing has extended out to June 15th to give districts in the state of Massachusetts just a little extra time to complete this assessment. I can tell you, we have had a very successful administration of the MCAS, both for our in-person students and for our RLA students. We are 100% done with MCAS testing at the Trahan, North Street, and Ryan School. We have only two students at the Winn still in need of completing, and at the high school, we are due to complete by or before June 10th. So, I know I speak for Superintendent Malone and myself, and all of you, I'm sure. We offer our sincerest gratitude to all our students, both our in-person and RLA students, their teachers, our RLA parents, the administration, and certainly the IT team that truly made this year's MCAS administration go so smoothly, so we thank everyone. Again, hopefully, this is the last MCAS update you receive of this school year. Thank you.
And Mrs. Regan, would you like to stay for the summer reading program as well?
Yes, I would. And let me just begin by saying in your packet is a summer reading program summary that Ms. Felicia, Principal of the Heathbrook School, Chenanovich, compiled for you to help just facilitate the process of reviewing the summer reading. So we thank Ms. Chenanovich quite a bit for this report. But what you have in front of you is a summary. I'm going to start with the K-4 summer reading. Students in grades K-4 will be asked to read or have read to them- Students in grades K-4 will be asked to read or have read to them three books over the summer. The suggested book titles are provided for each grade level on our district website under the summer reading program. And you can see that we're asking every grade K through 2 student to either read or have read to them 15 minutes per day, grades 3 through 4, 30 minutes per day, and complete a summer reading log. Students will submit one nonfiction book summary. In grades 5 through 6, you can see that there is an expectation that students will read three books with one being at least fiction and one nonfiction. The suggested book list as well is published on our district website. Students will complete a daily book log. We're asking students to read 20 minutes per day. And when we say we recommend that, we certainly are also acknowledging that students may use those audiobooks. However, they're accessing, reading or listening to books on tape or digitally over the summer is fine. Activity sheets are also provided for this grade level and a movie poster can be completed for the third book. In grades 7 through 8, we're taking a little bit of a different approach this year. The Wynn Middle School will use a shared reading experience of a single story to help shape the culture of their school and the school community for the 2122 school year. The title is Forget Me Not by Ellie Terry. The book will be provided to all students through a partnership with the Wynn PAC. Audio versions as well of this, many audio versions are available through the Tewksbury Public Library using Hoopla. And students will be asked to complete a creative writing assignment by choosing from several options. And you can see the options listed there. Again, the title is Forget Me Not by Ellie Terry. And we're very excited about this approach that the Wynn is taking towards that rebuilding of school culture when we come back. Tewksbury High School Reading Program. Students will pick a book of their choice with suggestions that are provided and suggestions that are not required reading throughout their next school year. Students will identify five important passages that represent the beginning, middle, and end, copy the five passages down, and bring them to their English class the first week of school, which they will use to perform in a writing assignment. So again, we thoroughly recommend that all students utilize the Tewksbury Public Library as they have all of those, so many of our book list titles on audio version and available in hard copy. The audio version is certainly a great accommodation for our students who struggle with the summer reading assignment. And you can see the Tewksbury Public Library also has some identified dates and opportunities for students. We hope that people will access their website to take advantage of those. So if there are any questions on our summer reading, once again, just a reminder to parents, all of the summer reading grade level book lists and activity sheets are posted to our district website.
Ms. Regan, will we have any hard copies for the kiddos that don't have access to online or printers or anything at home? Can you confirm for me that what they're going to need to do for writing will be sent home the last day of school and everybody will have what they need?
These schools are organizing those packets of information and sending them to the next school. For example, the elementary, the Ryan School is getting those packets ready for the grades below them and so on and so forth. That's typically the way that they do it. They'll order all the copies needed for the next school year for those grades.
And will we have a copy of this or the templates available at the public library for families that may need it when they go for library books over the summer?
I'm not sure about that, but that's a great suggestion. We'll certainly make those available to the library.
I just want to make sure that it's accessible to all. Thanks.
Mr. Stadman?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Garabedian?
No questions.
Mr. Parsons?
No questions.
Just one question, Mrs. Regan. Those that are participating in the catch, I forget what you refer to it, the mitigation over the summer? Were they going to be able to maybe do some of this work while they're participating in that summer programming?
I think that's also a great suggestion if they're reading in that environment. Depending on the program, there may be very targeted or specialized instruction happening, but I think we can certainly offer to all of those summer school programs. If a particular book is being read, why not, you know, write that down and keep that in a log? I'll pass that suggestion on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. The handbook's already being done. That brings us to committee appointments. The Tewksbury North and Treyhan School Reuse Committee. I previously was nominated and sat on this committee. Boy, it seems like such a long time ago. I was just a regular member back then. And I'll be honest with you, we have one of my colleagues who also happens to sit on that committee. She's the vice chair of that committee. I have been straight out trying to even get there. So it would be my recommendation, certainly, you'd like to have some discussion with the board, if maybe we could appoint Mrs. Garabedian this evening to continue to serve in the role on the reuse. She won't serve as a citizen anymore. She will just simply serve as a school committee liaison. So those are my thoughts. I'll certainly open it up to my colleagues. Mr. Stadman, any thoughts or ideas?
As long as you're still willing to serve.
Yeah, I am definitely willing. It's been a long time. I think it's been like three years that we've been, or at least two, that we've been meeting. So if I were to take a school committee position, that would open a position on the committee for another community member, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Mrs. Demos?
I second the nomination.
Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, I'd go second the nomination as well.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? I'll make the official motion to appoint Mrs. Garabedian as the school committee seat on the North Treyhan School Reuse Committee.
Second.
And I have a second. Mrs. Demos, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Any opposed? Great, thank you for your continued service, Mrs. Garabedian. And we have the Tewksbury School Athletic Fields Committee. Mr. Stadman, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Yep, so I had the pleasure of working in the Fields Committee and then, you know, being moved up to the ESBC. I actually had a discussion with Mr. Parsons if he'd be willing to take that on, you know, having it be a, you know, a subcommittee for the ESBC. And, you know, if Nick is still wanting and available.
I am still interested and available.
Fantastic.
Mrs. Demos?
I make the motion that Nick Parsons represent the school committee on the Tewksbury School Athletic Fields Committee.
Great, now second that. All those in favor of Nick Parsons serving as the Tewksbury School Athletic Fields Committee, school committee representative, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for your commitment. Sure that will be a nice fit with your athletic background, so thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, moving on to school committee matters of interest. And we'll stay on this side of the room, Mr. Parsons?
I am not at this time.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Garabedian.
I just want to recognize that we had, you know, a great opportunity to attend the Veterans Day events. The Tewksbury VFW 8164 and Auxiliary held a great program. So the school committee represented there. We also participated in the parade with the Patriotic Committee and that was a great day for the town. So thank you for the invitation to the VFW. And, you know, happy Pride Month in our schools.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mrs. Demos?
Yes, I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the administration, staff, teachers, parents, volunteers that have helped make this week a successful week for our seniors at the high school here. We have the upcoming graduation on Friday. And it takes a village, like they say, to make it work. And we've had a great team of volunteers. I wanted to especially thank Ms. Carla Branshaw, who has really coordinated a great effort into and adopt a senior in celebrating every Tewksbury resident that's a high school senior, regardless of the high school they attend. Each and every student was celebrated or will be celebrated before their graduation. And I can say as a mom of one of those graduating seniors, it really makes a difference in their lives. It's very memorable and Carla should be commended for the time and effort that she did in putting this together. We have All Night Long coming after the graduation that still is in need of some volunteers. So if there's anyone out there that is interested, we are still looking for some volunteers. And just a congratulations to all of our high school seniors that will be graduating on Friday. I wish them all the best of health and happiness in the future endeavors, whatever that may be. I hope that they stay safe and that they dream big.
Thank you, well said, Mrs. Demos. And Mr. Stadman?
Yes, and up all night, I'm still looking forward to my 11 till whenever shift.
I saw you run with me 11 to 4.
Oh, my wife signed me up till 4, fantastic. Anyways, yes, and make it short and sweet. I know next week, my kids are looking forward to wrapping up the week. And they've already started saying this is their last Tuesday, this is their last Wednesday. You know, big shout out to all of the admin, staff, teachers, everyone that makes this school tick and facility staff and everybody else. You know, we don't do anything here. We just push papers around. It's everybody else that, you know, makes things work around here. Dave just pushes numbers around, but, you know, I give him enough crap, but, you know, he does work, so. Yes, kids, make sure you're safe, all two of you that are watching. But yeah, keep safe this summer and look forward to seeing you guys all back in September. We'll still do our paper pushing around here. That's all I got for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. And I just shout out a thank you to all our families. Most importantly, patience. It certainly was a very difficult, trying year. I can tell you, I never thought in a lifetime we'd be where we are, dealing with some of the things that we do. And it's really important for us that sit up here, basically as volunteers, that we feel respected in the community. And I know we felt that way. I know a lot of stuff went on this year. People were just generally unhappy. I mean, it's a pandemic, no one knew what was going on. And, you know, there's just been a lot of patient people. Sometimes we don't see that. Sometimes people come to meetings, sometimes people say things, sometimes people act in certain ways. But, boy, am I proud of this town. We got wonderful people here, so. We hear all your voices. We're looking forward to a much different school year next year, a much better school year. So, and then I have some summer camp opportunities. It'll probably take me a minute to read them. Most of them are paid. I think these are all run by our high school coaches. The first is our high school girls cheerleading. And they're running an outdoor clinic, June 21st to June 24th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And that's down at Livingston Street Field. The cost is $125 per cheerleader. And then there's a $10 discount if you have another child. Coach Boudreaux, our new basketball, head basketball coach, is running a camp down at Livingston as well. His camp runs 628 to 71. It's also at Livingston. It's grades 2 through 8, as is the cheerleading. And the cost to attend his camp is $125 for your first child and $75 for each additional child. Coach Bradley, girls' high school program, he's had a very successful career here. His camp is June 21st to June 24th, also at Livingston Street Park. It's grades 2 through 8. And the cost of that camp is also $125 for first student and $75 for our second child. And then, one of the most favorite, beloved camps that we have, I think, here in Tewksbury, is the Redmond Football Clinic. It's June 21st through June 24th. It's hosted by Coach Earwood and just like all these other high school coaches, they have all of their high school seniors and juniors going down and participating and teaching our youth, grades 2 through 8. These are all wonderful camps. His camp is 9 to 2. The cost is $100 for the first sibling. And then every sibling after that is $50. And for the older kids, kids in 8th and 9th grade upcoming, Coach Brian Earwood and Coach Tom Ryan, who was a former colleague of Mr. Earwood's here and now is the head coach at Methuen. They run an MVC football transition clinic. And that clinic is Monday, July 19th through July 22nd from 5:00 to 8:00. It's at Nicholson Stadium in Methuen. It's $150 if you sign up before July 4th and $165 if you sign up after. So I think that's all I have. For future school committee and subcommittee dates, our next regular school committee meeting will be on July 21st, 2021. And our administrative workshop is on August 18th, 2021, with our regular scheduled meeting that night scheduled for 6:00 PM. And the following meeting will be September 22nd. With that, I'll start, I'll turn to my colleagues. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
Not at this time.
Okay, as always, if someone does have something they would like to see addressed, please feel free to reach out to myself or any one of my colleagues or the superintendent. And with that, Mrs. Demos?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's school committee meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's the end of this vote. Thank you all for attending this evening and good night.